Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today is November 3rd, 2021, 6:00 PM. And this is the City Council Study Session. I'm Mayor Julia Johnson, and I am calling this meeting to order. I do not have an American flag to do the Pledge of Allegiance. So why don't we move on then to the roll call? I'll begin with Councilwoman Kestie.
Present.
Councilman McGoffin.
Present.
Councilman Owen.
Here.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilwoman DeYoung.
It's okay. Here.
And Councilman Loy. Okay. All right. So tonight, we're going to have a discussion of the utility rates and the charges. And I know that Mr. Freyberger is going to be leading us through this. So we look forward to a great informational study here tonight. Mark, you want to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers and Katie. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. And let's see if I can find my thing here. Are you seeing some general comments on your screens there?
Yes, we are.
So this is just the memorandum that's in your packet. Some of the, this timeline part got a little jumbled in the final version of that. Still working out some of the bugs and agendas. But I wanted to give you a real brief rundown of why we're doing this, why we're here tonight talking about utility rates. That's something we, we look at as staff every year in our effort to make sure that the city is financially responsible in the way we run our utility systems. This is sewer, solid waste and stormwater we'll be talking about tonight. And I'll just mention to you upfront that we also are looking at the transportation impact fees. It's the other ones we manage here out of Public Works. And we'll be coming to you on the November 23rd Council Meeting with a first look at that as well. It has the same kind of basic situation where it needs to be looked at annually in terms of its response to ongoing inflation. So just to begin with, the ordinances we adopted last year for the rate of these utilities all reference the Consumer Price Exit Index Urban for Seattle, Tacoma and Bremerton as a reference. CPIU is what that's generally abbreviated as. And so I've given you just a few years here to see how that's been looking since 2018 up to present. This column that my cursor's on now, this is the actual CPIU for the period June 2018 to 2019. And then to the right is what we actually adopted in that particular year. Then 2019 to 2020, June was 0.95%, bit lower. And we adopted 2.3%. This metric, by the way, June to June, CPI is fairly sensitive to that. And we actually used a metric last year of November to November. And it was higher at that point. So it was actually 2.474, I believe, is what was listed in the ordinance at that time. But it was a little lighter than that earlier on. And now, June 2020 to June 2021, we're seeing quite a spike that's related to COVID-19. We're at, we were 5.5%. That's trended down just a little bit in the last couple of months. It's down to 5.4%, not a huge change, September to September. And I'd just point out to you, just using this as the metric of June to June, that does give you a two-year average of about 3.2% for that period, 2019 to 2021. Anyway, you look at it, though, the costs have gone up significantly. And that's, that's affected many things that we deal with in operating our utilities. And the things that are ongoing expenses that we have to look at and cover in the utility structure include a number of things. Basically, operations and maintenance being the major expense in there. That's our manpower and our equipment and our administration, billing staff, and all those things that run these utilities. It also supports our equipment and repair and replacement fund. We use a portion of the proceeds from the rate revenue to set aside for replacement of our equipment as it wears out. And then it also supports the city's planned capital improvements, our CIP. Each of these functions, I'll talk about just a little bit more. Operations and maintenance, you probably appreciate, you're aware through Doug's good management of the city that, that we've been trying to keep that under control as best we can. We have seen in the last few years about an average of a 2% increase per year in salaries, driven by our ASME agreement, our collective bargaining agreement. That's under negotiation right now, of course. We can't expect that there's going to be an increase at or above 2% for again, again, for this, this period coming up. Benefits have actually increased much higher than the salaries themselves. They've been in a 7% to 8% range due to ongoing healthcare premium increases from our provider. And so our, our operating expenses in general are also subject to price inflation for things like services and fuel and materials and those kinds of things. That's a major component of why we do what we do. I've already talked about the ERNR a bit, the Capital Improvement Program. This is the projects that we do to provide for the services, for instance, on the sewer in particular. And Katie will talk a little bit more about that in a minute. But we have some major projects to do in the next 10 years. And we've been planning for those for some time now. And that's a key part of what we're doing tonight is making sure that we're addressing the plan and sticking as closely as we can to that so that we're ready for it when we get to the point of those major expenses. And we've got a plan that is designed to avoid major increases on, on a yearly basis by doing it over a gradual period of time. Katie will speak more of that as well. The sewer fund also includes general facilities charges. These, these are charges we put on development that pays their fair share of the growth impacts on the city. And we also look at that in addition to the rates themselves. And we've been increasing that by the same rate as we have the rates themselves. It kind of works hand in, hand in glove with that. We do not have general facilities charges currently for stormwater or there's not any call for it on solid waste. But there is some argument for looking at a GFC on stormwater. And I'll talk about that maybe a little bit as we finish. And I just want to point out also that Council has adopted, under Doug's management leadership, the Comprehensive Financial Management Policies. And those have adopted the GFOA Best Practices Recommendation for Ending Fund Balances at 16.67% of cash balances plus revenues. And we've used that in our planning to make sure that we've maintained a healthy fund balance on an annual basis. And Doug's been doing yeoman job of getting us in good shape to go forward. We were pretty thin. In fact, we're still pretty thin on one of the utilities on that. And we have some opportunities with what we're talking about tonight to help that out a little bit, too. So with that brief introduction, I'm going to turn it over to Katie and have her give you some specifics on these sewer utility itself. By way of introduction, many of you know Katie. She's been doing this for the city for quite a few years now, as long as I've been here, and that's 14 years. And prior to that as well, I understand. And Katie, this is her expertise, her company, Katie Isaacs and Associates. This is what she does. She works with municipalities and other agencies to examine and make sure that their rate systems are, are fair and that they're adequate to support the utilities and the other things that are involved in that. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Katie. And I'm going to stop my screen sharing so that you can do that if you'd like.
Great, thanks, Mark. It's good to see everyone here. And I see there's some new members and some returning members. So if I am repetitive, I'm sorry, try to get everyone on the same page. When the city updated its sewer comprehensive plan or general sewer plan a couple of years ago, we worked hard to put together a financial plan that will get you through the next 10 years. And the goal of that is there's going to be interim improvements at the wastewater treatment plant coming along. You're working on some now and in the next couple of years. And the big project is going to be at the end of our 10-year period or near the end. And it's going to be an upgrade of the wastewater treatment plant that is very expensive. So our whole financial plan was put together with the way the city has always liked to do is okay to do small modest step increases along the way. And we tried to put things together so that if you kept going on two small steps on rates and on general facilities charges, and we use 2.3% per year on both of those, at the end of the period, you would be able to borrow the money necessary to do the plan and be able to pay for it without having to have a dramatic increase. And so now, when Mark calls me, what I'm looking at is what has changed from that plan? Can you still make it? We know it's a plan and real life comes in the way. And yes, my answer today is yes, it still looks good. So you have this packet, I believe it was in your packet, I may have updated it. But I just wanted to give you kind of the update as I, so I'm keeping in mind the full plan and then looking at what has changed for this year. And as Mark talked about, the CPI or the cost escalation is higher than we said. It's clearly higher than the 2.3%. So we also have higher amount of growth than we anticipated in that plan. So I put these new numbers in here. I've updated with your current rates and general facilities charges and any other adjustments in the capital improvement plan and taken a look. And my conclusion is that if you stick with your 2.3% increases, you will get there. And let's take a look at what this means. Here's a picture down here of the, what your expenses are going to be. The bulk of it is this blue area, operating expenses. Then we have capital outlay. These are things that happen every year that are not considered, just because they're a little more expensive, they're not considered operating expenses, but it's a regular item that we budget for. The red is our debt service. You have existing debt service here. And then if all holds true, that we can get that paid off before we have to start on new debt. And you can see it takes quite a step up here. This is after the treatment plant. And the treatment plant upgrades, we're saying, are going to be in 2027, right here. So the green on top is the capital improvements. It says funded by rates. But in fact, all your capital improvements get paid for out of the sewer operating fund. And sometimes when they're higher here, we have to transfer money from your capital fund into 401 to make it work. And that's just what it looks like. That's what we anticipate. Let's see, can I go down here? Oh, here we go. So here's numbers for those of you that like numbers. But the assumptions are number of equivalent residential units per year, that these are new customers we anticipate coming in. So an equivalent residential unit is the equivalent of one home. If you're having apartments come in or businesses, they could be multiple ERUs. But we have updated for '21 through '24, we have stepped up to 100 ERU per year. And then we go back to our 50 ERU. And I put in here, which we can't see it here because I just have the summary. I tested what if the CPI increase is at 5.5%? And then we go to 5%, 4%, 3% and back down, like we have a spike. And then we come back down to our 2.3%. We know that the indirect cost allocation to the utilities has gone down, which is a benefit to the rate payers. And what this allows us to do is stick with that 2.3% increase in rates and build the fund balance so that you can stay on your financial plan. At the end, so you can see here in our operating fund, this yellow line as a reminder is we take our total revenue coming in minus our expenses. And if it's positive, that's what we want to be, positive. And if it's to the negative, that means we're dipping into our reserves for these years. And here we have two years in the interim, '21 and '22, where it shows we will be dipping into our reserves, which is intentional. We have large capital improvements that are underway and we'll be able to pay for those. But our, we test our minimum fund balance and it still looks good. And once we're out here in '23 through '29, all is good. We can stay on our path. And then, for those of you who were here, remember the goal was to build up the fund balance as we could in Fund 410, the capital fund. And so that when we do the upgrade, we will be able to buy down and not have to borrow as much debt under what it looks like today, that we could put $2 million aside, you know, take that out of the fund balance and put in there. We still will have 1.14 million in the capital fund balance. Our minimum target reserve for that is at $1 million. So we would still meet our minimum and then it would be building after that. So this is a reminder, well, it might seem like we need to have a higher increase this year because of the 5.5% cost escalation. It was a benefit to have that reduction from the, the indirect cost. So all in all, it looks to me like you can stay on the 2.3%. And if you were to do so, the, your rates would go up approximately $1.50. The connection fees would go up as well. And you can see the rate, let's see, your general facilities charge right now is $8,690. And it would go up to $8,890. And your current monthly residential rate is $66.58. And it would go up to $68.11 under this scenario. And given this new scenario that we would take $2 million and be able to buy down debt, this would give us a savings out here in '28 and '29 and going forward, a savings of $147,000 a year. And we could still do it right now as long as these assumptions hold true, that you could do it with a 2.3% increase. And here's just a picture of your capital improvements that we're planning. You're doing things both, we call it in the conveyance system and the treatment system. And so the conveyance is the pipes, you know, moving things along. And we have both. And you, they're, you know, kind of, they come and go as are necessary. And on the treatment plant, we have our interim improvements here. And then we wait until the wastewater treatment plant upgrade is necessary. And before that is the design and preliminary. All along, Mark is tracking the, the growth as it comes in to make sure, you know, if too much growth comes in, the, you may run out of capacity sooner. And this might have to be sooner. Right now, it looks like we're, we're still on the schedule and it looks okay. So that's my big picture, all in a nutshell. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
So are there any questions for Katie at this time? And I can't see because on my computer, all I see is the screen.
So here, I let me stop sharing.
Okay.
Hi, Katie, this is Councilman McGoffin.
Hello.
I thank you for the presentation. I just had one question about the growth projections. What was the reasoning that we would go back down to 50 after, was that 2022?
Yes, what, the reason is we're planning conservatively. And no, we have 100 ERU in '21, '22, '23 and '24. And it would go down to 50 in '25. And the reason is when we're projecting out, we try to be as conservative as possible to increase the likelihood that the financial plan that you can afford what you need to. And if we guess too high, we'll be short of revenue. So we tend to be conservative on the low side. And then if you get more, your financials will look even better.
Okay, thank you.
This is Councilwoman Diamond. Is, is the 100 per year actually realistic over the next several years looking at the amount of buildings, annexations and new developments that are going in, including apartment complexes?
So I can take that one on, Katie. We're, we're looking at close to 200 services connections this year between the apartments and the existing ones. And so that's basically two years on our, our chart you see there. And we were talking about it yesterday internally and looking at the projects that are on the books here. And there could be another over 100 year next year. But historically speaking in the city, and you'll see this, let me just screen share again and put up Katie's slide one more time. I am going to go down to that.
I think it's down another page or, or two. There's, there you go.
Okay, so you'll see that in 2019, there were 89 actual, and 2020, there were 51. So if you average between 2020 and 2021, actually being closer to 200, you're going to be, you know, you know, 125, something like that. It just varies year to year. And so as she said, we kept this conservative, but figuring we would have some pretty good growth, at least from '21 through '24. So it's a conservative approach. Could we exceed that? Yes, if we do, and Katie already mentioned that, what that will do is that will move the day closer that we have to upgrade the treatment plant. But because the revenues will be coming in and for, in the form of the general facilities charge, we would still be in a position to move forward with that if that does move forward that much. But over time, in Cedar Willy, and I realize this does change over time, too. But we've seen that the average has been under 100 pretty consistently over the last decade or so, anyway. So we thought that this was okay. This, this allows basically 701 new connections over the 10-year planning period. And I, I think that I, I'm certainly pretty comfortable with that. And again, if it does come in quicker, that builds our reserves faster and we're in a position to move forward as we need to.
So is, is that also something that we would need to consider increasing impact fees or anything like that if the amount of growth is, is so quick that this would force the project up? And, you know, yes, the funds come in quicker, but with the price of inflation and everything else, is that something that we need to be looking at or is already being considered?
So we looked at that pretty closely two years ago. And those that are on the, were on the utility committee then can speak about that. But we considered those scenarios of going higher or staying lower. And we took a middle range on those. And we feel like that following the plan with the 2.3% increases, we have struck a good balance of development paying their fair share of the cost of the new facilities. And again, they're high enough, based on what we've already got built into the model, that they will provide the funding adequate to build that plant when it, when it comes time to do so. If it moves a year or two quicker in history, then we'll have the money in place to do basically the same financial planning that we're looking at here. The one thing that would change on us, and we have a year's cushion on that, is the debt service. I'm not sure if I can find that slide. Katie mentioned here, you can see it on the bar chart. In, in 2027, our existing Public Works Trust Fund loan, which has got about a $300,000 and some thousand dollar a year payment, is paid off. And so what we've been shooting for with our plan is to get that paid off before we take the new debt on. If we did move the plant construction backwards or closer in time to us, by a year, we would still be okay. If it came back two or three years, then we would have, have to look at this closer. I think we're still conservative enough that we're going to be fine on that.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I would need you to speak up if you do. Okay, so as I understand it, there is no action required for this meeting tonight. And this topic needs to go before a public hearing and first read. And that'll be next Wednesday, November 10th, at our council meeting with a possible adoption on the 23rd. So with that, Mark, do you have any last thoughts?
Yes, I'd like to talk just a minute about the storm and solid waste utilities, too. The reason I wanted Katie to lead off is she pretty much said the same basic elements that apply to these utilities. We, we've been raising them the last couple of rounds at about the same rate as the sewer utility. The solid waste utility in particular, as I mentioned, that one runs pretty close. So we don't, we don't produce big surpluses in the solid waste facility. We have the opportunity this year, and Doug can speak to this, or Debbie, she's on, with the IDCA, the Indirect Cost Allocation One-Time Adjustment we're doing, that's the opportunity of generating a little bit more cash to go into the ending fund balance, which is pretty much needed in that particular account. Of the three we're talking about, that one does not currently meet our 16.67% goal of, of revenues plus beginning fund balance. In fact, it's well under that. But it helps it out with what we're doing with the indirect, indirect cost allocation changes that we're making. So that one works though, still with 2.3% and those assumptions that I mentioned. Stormwater utility is a little healthier in terms of ending fund balances. And the, the credit that will come into the stormwater utility is actually relatively higher than the other two utilities. And it'll generate some additional funds to go into the ending fund balance or into the reserves. Again, same, same scenario, the indirect cost analysis is what makes this work for the year. And that's basically what I need to say. Oh, I do want to point out that, you know, we just completed the sewer comprehensive plan update, which was adopted earlier this year. And that was a vital part of our planning process. It allowed us to verify the things that we've been doing in, in our yearly sewer outlooks that Katie's prepared with a updated capital improvement program. We need to do the same thing for our stormwater utility. We have, if you've read through the notes I have there, we have not that much less lineal footage of pipe in our stormwater utility than we do in the sewer. The biggest difference between the two is we don't have a major treatment plant at the end of the line on the pipes. Our treatment is done more by regional ponds and ditches and things like that. Nonetheless, that system is going to need some major capital improvements over the next couple of decades. Many of the pipes in there that have been around for 50 years are nearing the end of their lifespan. And I do expect we'll start seeing some failures if we don't get on those before long. And the first step in that process is to update our stormwater management plan. That has not been done since 1997, so it's very much out of date. I'm mentioning here that the cost of a plan like that's about $150,000. In prior budget years, we simply didn't have enough surplus to do that, nor did we have the manpower here to manage another planning process on top of what we were already doing. But we're getting to the point where it's becoming critical. And so I do expect in the next year, in the next budget cycle, you will see us requesting the funding to do that plan. That will allow us then to do the same kind of planning for that.
That will allow us then to do the same kind of planning for that utility that we're doing for the sewer utility and look at. Capital projects in particular. So with that. The overall impact is just summarized right here on those two point three percent rate increases. It's about a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars in additional revenue between. All three utilities there, and so I'll close out with that, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. So if there is nothing else, Katie, I want to thank you for your report. Thank you for being here tonight and all the work that you have done. Thank you, Mark, as always, very comprehensive, greatly appreciated. And thank you, everyone, for being on tonight, and we will have further discussion regarding this at the next council meeting, six P M, November tenth. Everyone, have a good night. Thank you.
Good night.